No, I'm lower. I'm already tall.
All right, we're gonna get started. Call the City Council Study Session, Muni Services Special Focus Area Meeting. This April eighth at five thirty at the City Council Chambers. We'll call this meeting to order. The public participation, the Auburn City Council Study Session Meeting scheduled for today will be held both in person and virtually. Do we have roll call?
Deputy Mayor Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Amer?
Yeah.
Councilmember Baldwin? Councilmember Baldwin? Councilmember Rakes?
Here.
Councilmember Clinton Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel?
Here.
All right, do we have any agenda modifications? Don't think we do.
No, Your Honor, we do not.
Okay, very good. Next is announcements, reports, and presentation. And first up, we have briefing on transportation plan Director Gallo.
Yes, and we actually have Jacob Sweeting coming up, who is our Assistant Director and City Engineer, and he's gonna be walking through our transportation cost plan update video.
Excellent, thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
So, good evening, once again for the record Jacob Sweeting, Assistant Director of Public Works and City Engineer. And tonight, I'm gonna give a brief overview of the 2024 Comprehensive Transportation Plan Update. So, last week, you heard from Ryan Mondrak, who presented the utility systems plans. That is a portion of the utilities element, which makes up one of many different elements of the comprehensive plan that we're going through and updating now. Tonight, I am gonna be presenting the Transportation System Plan, which is a portion of the transportation element of that overall comprehensive plan. So, this is a scheduled overview of the comprehensive plan as it relates to the Transportation System Plan. Starting a year ago, we presented an overview of the comprehensive plan update process and a summary of the various, including, a summary of the various elements. Following this, we came to the City Council three different times and discussed the transportation policies that would be included in the new Transportation System Plan. And then tonight is a high-level overview of the Transportation System Plan. Followed by, in September, we will come back and present the full draft plan. And then later in December, we will come back and ask for adoption of all the elements in the entire comprehensive plan. So, the Comprehensive Transportation Plan is a combination of seven different chapters, followed by a set of maps and appendices. And tonight, I'm just gonna briefly walk through each of the chapters and give you a summary of what's included in each chapter, as well as the maps and appendices. So, the first chapter is an introduction to the plan and summarizes the overall purposes of the plan and a brief description of the plan goals. The introduction discusses the public involvement process, which to date has included presentations to the Transportation Advisory Board. We've had a posting on our city website, collecting feedback from the public. We've also been out at tabletop events at the farmer's market, collecting feedback from residents, as well as taking comments that we have on our See Click Fix app-related transportation issues and incorporating into our overall public comment. The introduction also summarizes agency coordination, strategies for the plan development, and general transportation planning and operational activities. And finally, the introduction discusses how the existing and future land use throughout the city helps shape planning and the plan itself. So, the second chapter, the Multimodal Network and Standards, provides details of the city's transportation system as a multimodal network. As a reminder, multimodal means addressing the many different types of transportation modes in the city. This includes cars using city streets and active transportation, which includes walking and biking, transit, freight, and the airport. The chapter also includes an inventory of the city's different facilities, including streets, sidewalks, and bike facilities. The chapter provides a summary of current and near-future transit services available in the city of Auburn. And then, one of the most important and new elements of the chapter is the establishment of multimodal level service standards. So, the standards establish metrics for determining if your transportation systems are functionally adequate. Previous plans included level service standards, but only for vehicles. So, this plan expands those level service standards to address non-motorized facilities, transit, and freight. The third chapter includes a brief summary of transportation safety goals and policies, and then references the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. So, the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan is currently under development and will be presented in a separate document. We will come back and discuss this document with you, starting in next month. We also will be conducting public output outreach to collect feedback from the Transportation Advisory Board and from the public to hear concerns about safety and ideas for how to address those potential safety issues. The Comprehensive Safety Action Plan will expand on analysis done with another plan that we've done, and we actually do every other year. It's called the Local Road Safety Plan. The Local Road Safety Plan takes actual crash statistics and overlays that with certain risk factors to see where there's potential need for countermeasures or improvements to address those risk factors to reduce the likelihood of crashes that cause serious injuries or fatalities. So, like I said, we will be discussing and presenting a draft of the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan in May to the City Council, followed by another discussion in July, at which point the plan will be updated to include additional input from the public in the Transportation Advisory Board. And then, we will actually bring that Comprehensive Safety Action Plan, which is separate from the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, for adoption in August as a separate document. So, Chapter Four is really, to me, includes most of what's in the comprehensive plan. It includes the transportation system goals, policies, and actions. So, there are eleven goals presented in the chapter. At each goal, is supported by a series of policy statements that support the goal. The policies provide the fundamental basis that help guide transportation-related ordinances, resolutions, city code, design standards, and administrative decisions. So, examples of these activities are also included in the chapter. And now, I'm gonna just briefly run through those different goals. So, the first goal is the planning goal that states we will plan the transportation system to comply with the Growth Management Act to improve safety for all types of travel, to support the city's land use class, land use plan, and to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. The second goal commits to planning and implementing the transportation system to support equity. The third goal is safety-focused and says that the city strives to significantly reduce or eliminate serious injuries and fatalities through a safe systems approach. So, this, again, is a goal that will be discussed in more detail with the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan discussion next month. The fourth goal states that the city will comply with environmental laws and regulations. This goal is supported by a policy that states the city's transportation. Transportation systems will be designed efficiently and support reductions in greenhouse gas emissions, protect and enhance environmental, economic, and human health and safety, and advance environmental justice. So, the fifth goal, starting on the left, is to ensure that we will develop and maintain a transportation system that is accessible to all, regardless of disability, economic status, age, and other factors. The sixth goal and related policies establish the multimodal level server standards that I briefly mentioned before and are detailed further in that second chapter than I mentioned. So, Goal Seven is that the city will ensure concurrency, meaning that transportation systems are adequate to provide for growth and development. The related policies establish the framework for mitigation of development impacts on the transportation system through traffic impact fees, through front-end improvements, and through mitigation of specific impacts caused by the development activities. And then, onward to the right, the eighth goal is to manage the overall capacity needs of the transportation system through demand and system management strategies. This goal is supported by things like our commute trip reduction activities and through our city's intelligent transportation or I T S systems. So, the last three goals and related policies and actions are related to right-of-way or property rights needed for the city's transportation system, asset management, and parking. The right-of-way goal is to preserve existing and, is to preserve existing right-of-way that we already have and to acquire additional right-of-way as needed to support our future transportation systems. The asset management goal relates to strategically building, maintaining, repairing, and replacing the city's transportation system assets in the most efficient and effective way possible. Within this goal, there are policies related to our pavement preservation programs, bridge inspection, maintenance, and repairs, traffic signals, and other transportation assets. The final goal is to ensure a balance between on-street and off-street parking. So, some of the policies related to parking include the requirement that new development provide adequate off-street parking that meets the needs of their development, unless there are exceptions, as provided by state law, that don't allow us to require the off-street parking from that particular development. On to Chapter Five. Chapter Five addresses the management, maintenance, and operations of the city's transportation systems. So, the chapter includes a summary of current and future anticipated needs from a staffing standpoint, from a facility standpoint, and from an overall equipment and vehicle standpoint. It also includes city's actions and programs related to asset management. It describes the city's pavement preservation programs, sidewalk repair programs, bridge inspections, repair programs, traffic signal maintenance, and other system assets. So, Chapter Six is all about the funding, all about the money. It basically provides a summary that discusses how the city's transportation's operations and capital investments are funded. The chapter provides a summary of funding sources and projected costs. And it also strategy, it also provides a strategy for how we might deal with revenue shortfalls if some of those projections don't come in as anticipated. Chapter Seven, the last chapter, summarizes how we will monitor and evaluate progress towards the goals of the plan. New for this plan is the requirement that we actually, five years from now, have a check-in and have a formal report of how we're doing in achieving those goals and if any adjustments need to be made. The plan can also be updated on an annual basis, but a full update will also be required in another ten years. The chapter ends with a summary of accomplishments made since the last full plan update in 2015. So, the appendices really include a lot of the more visual, fun, interactive things, I would like to say. They include maps, some of which little snippets are shown here that show existing bike facilities, existing sidewalks, existing transit services. There's also maps that shows where we are planning on putting new bike facilities, new sidewalks, and where ultimately our bike network is planned to be in place. It also includes a whole series of conceptual designs and estimates for all the capital projects that we have in the comprehensive plan to address system capacity needs. And it also includes a list of those priority, of high-priority bike and sidewalk projects. The appendices also includes a series of checklists that are filled out to show that we are complying with the many different needs for the plan that are included, that are required by the Petersham Regional Council, P S R C, and also by the Department of Commerce. And finally, new to this plan are actually interactive web links that are included in the appendices, where you can click on the link and it will take you to actually an online map, where you can see some of this information visually and scroll through and zoom in and get an idea of what's happening there. So, next steps. Starting this week, we're just putting in the finishing touches on updating the website that has the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. And we will be posting it, we will be posting the draft plan for public comment. We will also be sending the link and a plan to several different agencies for comment, including the State D O T, the Muckshu Indian Tribe, and our neighbors. We will also be posting the conceptual designs for all those projects I mentioned and give people an opportunity to comment on each individual project and tell us what they like, what they don't like, concerns they might have about those projects, as well as all the policies that I mentioned. Within that same posting, we will be posting, like I said, the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan, which will be a separate link that will allow people to go in and provide specific safety issues or concerns they might have that they want, would like to see addressed in our Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. The plan will also be discussed with the Transportation Advisory Board next month. And the plan will be up on the website through the end of May for that public comment period. So, in September, I will plan on coming back and discussing the full draft plan with you. And then, in December, we'll come back for adoption of the full plan. With that, any questions?
Council, do we have any questions tonight? Yes, Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you, Chair. So, kind of in that space of posting the website and beginning to get feedback on that draft plan, are we going to have anything sort of semi-posted in our high-traffic locations throughout the city? Like sort of morden easel situations that would alert people to it?
Yes, so after we make the postings this week, we're gonna turn to actually some focused engagement opportunities. A few examples of that, there are three larger projects in the comp plan that we want to speak, we want to get specific feedback from certain neighborhoods. So, we're gonna be sending out postcards to those neighborhoods and asking for feedback on those projects and the rest of the comp plan from those neighborhoods specifically. We also are gonna have another tabletop engagement out on the Inurban Trail when we go into May, which is Bike Everywhere Month. We're gonna be posted at the trail and we're gonna have the information there and an opportunity for people to comment. We're also starting some discussions about trying to have maybe an engagement at the senior center, where we can actually walk through and get the feedback and actually put it in the website there with whoever wants to make the comments. And then, besides that, just open to any suggestions for further engagements.
Yeah, to follow up on that, I was thinking places where even if your team is not there necessarily driving an active engagement, having at least sort of a posted board that would drive people to the website so you can still pick up kind of off-hours engagement might also include locations like the food bank or employee, or pardon me, the Auburn Resource Center, Senior Center, of course, Teen Center. You know, people who either don't have cars, don't have transit, or heavily rely on transit, I think might be some good extra locations for posting if that plan is still being put together. And then, the other question I have in that is I do occasionally receive feedback from riders on their transit routes. What's the best way to make sure that that makes it to your team as well?
So, I mean, it'd be great to have that comment made on the website. And once we have that link posted, I will plan on sending that link out to the City Council so you have that and can make those comments. But yeah, if you make it in, there's actually, I believe there's a section focused on transit, where if you can provide those comments there, it'd be appreciated.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions from City Council members? Yes, Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I've been curious. You get the report of how many people call in for the quick click, the quick fix?
See Click Fix.
Yeah. Do we ever get a report on how many people actually use that?
I'm not sure. I T has that answer?
Yeah, so, I mean, we can get a report about how many requests we have seen. I could not tell you if those are the same people or different people because the system does allow them to post them anonymously. And so, there's no way for us to know how many are the same people or not. But we typically deal with, I wanna say, last year was just short of about six thousand requests that came in through See Click Fix. But we certainly have those numbers and can go through that with counsel if needed.
I was just curious. That's a lot, so, never mind. Yeah, it'd be a lot to go through, but yeah, that's interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Trout Manuel, I will tell you that I have seen, I, I've reported stuff on See Click Fix and then I get like a push from the city saying, since you were interested in this, I think I've seen that where they, they reach out to us if you've used the system.
I've used it once. And if I can add one more thing, so in the weekly reports that come out, there is actually a pie chart in there that shows you all the requests that come in through See Click Fix on a monthly basis.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Kate Baldwin.
And just one more question, and if you answered this and I missed it with my arrival, forgive me. But in that topic of, I think it's the chapter on safety, I know that recently there had been an incident with the transit system in Kent where a woman had been assaulted. Being proactive within our city, is that safety chapter inclusive of kind of the stops themselves? So, I think back to when I used to be on campus as a college student, sort of distributed throughout campus, there were sort of emergency call buttons, that type of thing. Is that the type of safety that we're looking for within that chapter? Or what, you know, sort of what mechanics of safety are we exploring there?
Well, the, so the safety chapter itself talks about the safe systems approach, which means that we're looking at all the different mechanisms to try to improve safety of all the transportation systems. Transit's unique in itself in that we don't provide transit services. So, a lot of our policies and actions are related for advocate, advocating for changes or improvements. So, we do have policy statements related to saying we advocate or encourage adequate bus facilities, safe, secure, that type of thing. But it's not a specific focus of that safety chapter because we don't have direct control over it. We can only advocate and try to encourage the transit providers to have those things.
Right, I think that was where I wasn't sure because we've got, as you said, those providers handling the service itself versus what we have set up within the city. Thank you.
See any more questions? I'll just conclude with one question. Chapter Two, Goal Two, talks about example of planning and implementing to, for equity. And I was just wondering, you know, I see under Goal Five, multimodal accessible network. And it seems like that might be under equity as well. But could you give me an example of plan and implement the city's transportation system to support system-wide equity? Is there an example of that that you could?
Sure, and really, the equity goal, it encompasses almost all the goals. It touches each one of them because there's a component of that that really goes into every, all the transportation planning that we do. An example would be when we say are prioritizing, we are gonna invest in improvements in new sidewalks or new bike facilities. We're gonna do that in places that typically might be more reliant on the non-motorized type travel, which that requires looking at equity and demographics. So, often, there are certain areas and certain demographics that do rely on non-motorized transportation, specifically to access transit services more than other areas in the city. So, that's how we look at that and try to focus our priorities in that way.
Good example, thank you. All right, unless anyone has any final questions or comments. Jacob, thank you for your presentation, appreciate it. Looking forward to learning more as we head towards the comp plan approval.
Now, we'll send that link out later this week.
All right, thank you. I would like to suggest that we change the agenda slightly here. Normally, it would be the ready report out next, which I was gonna prevail on you, Councilmember Baldwin. But before we do that, I'd like to turn the gavel over to Chair Rakes. We have some guests that we're going to present under the Project Be Free presentation. And we don't, we understand that they have some need to get up here and present. We'd like to invite them to do that. So, Cheryl, I'll turn the gavel over to you, excuse me, Councilmember Rakes.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Turn that over to you.
I would like to invite Joelle and Katina up to do their presentation for the Project Be Free. It's like chief caller is gonna get it all set up.
Sorry, I'm just trying to get the right, so we can go through it.
It's PDF, so they need to click the mouse. It's not PowerPoint, it's PDF, so.
Oh, it's PDF. We can just do it this way.
Yeah, there's, even on a PDF, you can still, it still acts like a.
Like a presentation.
Yeah. If this is easier for you.
Okay, are you guys okay with this?
Sure.
Yeah, sure. I'll just continue this way.
Go ahead.
Okay. I feel like I'm in school. My name is Katia, for those of you that don't know us. I am the Executive Director and Co-Founder of Project Be Free.
My name is Joelle Thomas. I am the Community Outreach Manager and second co-founder of Project Be Free.
There we go, all right. So, a little bit of background from Project Be Free. We began, yeah, sorry, it's already been a long day, I guess. Project Be Free started in August of 2020, right in the height of the pandemic. During that time, I was in private practice as a mental health counselor, as well as working under another nonprofit as a community outreach manager, mainly working with the homelessness population. And one thing that I noticed during the pandemic was that everyone on my caseload was experiencing domestic violence. And there was a lot of experience that was challenging during that point because, of course, our brick-and-mortar D V organizations were closing their doors and how it would be really difficult for a lot of our families to access services, first of all, if they didn't speak the language, if the only thing that was still operational was police departments. And the third thing was, how do I get services when I'm housed with someone that's abusive? Okay. Joelle's background is in law enforcement. So, really, the idea that we came up together was the benefit of what a city and a police department could experience if we would look at a co-responder-type model in regards to D V. if we would look at a co-responder type model in regards to DV type calls. These are similar type models to, like in the city of Kirkland, they have an outreach MHP team. There's a radar project up north in which MHPs ride along with officers. So we don't ride along with officers. And the benefit that we see to that is really that a community can see us not show up with officers and know that we're part of the community. A lot of our staff speak a multitude of languages. And really, I think it can be encouraging for a lot of our community to be able to see the opportunity for team. A lot of the feedback that we've gotten from individuals that see us on scene with officers is like, oh, my gosh, I never thought that something like this could, could happen where I called 911 and now I'm being able to be connected to a multitude of resources. It's just not, you know, like someone's going to jail, which in, you know, in some instances, that does have to happen. But we also have to be able to look at families holistically and be able to know what that family is needing. Families are really diverse in age groups and a multitude of reasons that they might be experiencing crisis. So we want to be able to speak to a lot of those crises that even if somebody does get released from jail, they're, we're not going to end up in the same type of situation. The goal, I would say primarily for Project Be Free is for us to be able to decrease violence to the next generation. What does that look like? In many instances, we will show up on scene with officers where somebody has been arrested. But in many instances, there is other household members that are part of those DV calls. And we, we understand that in many instances, those youth, if we don't intervene and we don't give support to them, they are also going to be either future generation abusers or survivors. So this is what is really our mission, is to be able to provide a wraparound service, not only to the survivor or abuser in that situation, but also to the next generation. All right. So as mentioned, our mission is to really provide crisis response to individuals in our communities. I will say right now, the city of Auburn is our fourth city. We started off in Renton in August of 2022, did a year pilot for them, and then we were able to be a contracted service with them. We're moving into our second contracted year this year. After starting in Renton, we then moved into Newcastle, seeing that there was a lot of overlap. In many instances, one household member is living in one city and one household member is living in the other city. So it was helpful to our departments that we were able to wrap both departments. This last November, we also started in, in the city of Kent. I will say that has been an exciting journey just because the city of Kent is very busy, which I know that the city of Auburn is very busy as well. So we're moving, for those of you that saw last week, we approached with the help of Sergeant in Kent, the city council, and we are opening budget for us to be a contracted service in the city of Kent as well. A little foreshadowing of what we'll probably be asking here. Okay. So a little bit more information about our team. Currently, our team is made up of 16 members. For those of you that get to be able to see our website, yes, I do get the, the kind of astonishing surprise of like, oh, my gosh, your team is so diverse. And yes, that is the goal of our resources and our team. When we move into each new city, our goal is to always mirror what is in that city. So our goal is never to just like expand into other cities and then the, the resources get strained or our team members get burnt out. And it's also important for us to, on our team, have language capabilities of what is needed in that department. What has been helpful in going alongside law enforcement is that we're able to provide on-scene translation services, things that oftentimes can be lost in translation when you're using a third party or you're using some sort of device. So our team currently speaks a total of 18 languages. And our goal is to always continue to hire based on what the cities are needing, which is oftentimes what we are discovering in our pilots of what it, what type of calls are being called in. Other things that kind of set our MHPs and our team apart is that we are all trained in power and control dynamics, intergenerational trauma, mediation, de-escalation, really things that are housed in DV. Of course, there are other needed resources based on mental health, but our goal is really to be polished in DV, seeing as how it is oftentimes the contributing factor to other experiences. So these are some of the resources that our team are able to provide to our community members. As mentioned, this is our crisis response program. We also have short-term DV counseling, which comes at no cost to our individuals that are connected to us. This can be anywhere from 15 to 20 sessions. People don't have to have status, people don't have to have insurance. Our goal is to, when people come into us during crisis, that we are able to resource them to counseling as services as soon as possible because we know that in many instances, if we don't help them during that crisis experience, they're going to go back to the cycles that they know. Other things that we offer are Wellness Symposium, that is a once a year wellness event in which we welcome all of the individuals that we have served throughout the year and previous years. We also have a training center, which we train a lot of licensed providers in the area that are looking to understand more how to help clients or individuals in the community based on DV crisis. Other things that we offer are our Youth Mentorship Program. We have currently our Youth Outreach Specialist that is working here in the city of Auburn. She just presented for the Auburn School District this last month. So we are actually getting a lot of referrals from the school districts as well, from law enforcement. And then we also offer family DV support groups in, in regards to supporting community members that are not going through DV themselves, but they are supporting somebody that is experiencing crisis. And then on the right side, these are programs or resources that we oftentimes refer into. Long-term mental health counseling, we are not a long-term service. Our goal is to be able to stabilize someone and then transition them for continuity of care. We also offer connections to things like transitional housing, domestic violence intervention treatment resources and services. We oftentimes are working with the first center or juvenile detention center in which many of the instances, a lot of the calls we are responding to are where youth are being the abusive party in that household. Other things that we can refer individuals to are things like legal advocacy service for family law as well as immigration. We understand that a lot of instances, the reason that domestic violence continues to happen in a household is because people feel stuck in that situation. So a little bit more about what co-response is. Co-response is, for our team in particular, in when officers will give us a call when they are on scene at a DV call. This can either be a prevention type call in which it's, there is no arrest that is going to happen, but we know that if things continue to escalate, it's going to lead to someone getting arrested, someone being harmed or worse. So we are able to intervene and provide resources at that point. And to be able to really figure out like, what is the key factors of what is keeping this individual or this household in this place of crisis? And to be able to triage to other services that are needed. In many instances, there is an overlap of what our team has witnessed is that somebody's mental health is really decompensated. They are needing to be detained or they are not taking medication anymore, which is then contributing to a DV experience. So our team is very skilled in knowing that there is oftentimes no clear line of this is mental health and this is DV, knowing that in many instances, it's going to be an overlap. The model really is to enhance safety in regards to our community. We understand that in many instances, law enforcement is asked to step into certain experiences that might, they might not know or have the tools for. So we feel that in providing this team collaborative response, it allows officers to know and do the experience that they are trained in, but also have an extended hand to be able to help with mental health resources. So these are the type of calls that we will respond to or help support families in. So as mentioned, the prevention calls that we provide support to are when there are verbal disputes, mental health or substance abuse resourcing in regards to family needing help with someone getting to treatment, something like that. We're also able to help provide resources for mediation. In instances, you know, couples are staying together because the cost of living is high. And I don't love or care for this person anymore, but I'm stuck here. So oftentimes, it's resourcing and providing some alternative options that community members not, might not know are existing unless we have some of those needed conversations. Other things that we are able to provide resources to are education on DV, the cycles of DV, intergenerational experiences. Really like a holistic model to be able to break down to individuals on like why this is happening, what, what contributes to keep them in these type of situations, especially if many of these instances are historical due to family stuff. The other type of calls that we respond to are what we call our crisis management calls. This is when there is oftentimes an arrest that is happening or there is an imminent danger situation in which law enforcement knows that there is an act of violence that has happened. There is probable cause to do an arrest, but this person has fled. So in those instances, we're able to support individuals and families. And that might be getting them to a hotel for a night or two so we can get them an order of protection. So anything to just be able to stabilize and make sure that officers don't have to continue to come out to the same households. So currently, when individuals call, we do have a main intake number, which triages into three different directions. Our first intake line is just for community members that speak English. This is a normal business hours line, I would say, with a little bit of extra. So this is a Monday through Friday line, the community members that can call in themselves and refer and ask for services. Our second line is for our community members that speak Spanish. I will say currently, I think I pulled numbers recently, it's about 47% of individuals that do reach out to us are Spanish speakers. So it is a pretty big chunk of those that we serve. And for our line three, this is just for our partnered police departments. We've had the question of like, what if an officer in a different city wants to call? And I say, well, encourage leadership to talk to us. But these, line three is really just for our partnership cities because we want to be intentional about giving good services and not stretching ourselves thin, running all over the county just because we know that then that cuts down, or I guess it makes it more likely that we're not going to show up within a window of what we've promised departments. All right. So this is a little bit more information. It's a tree in regards to see when people get connected to us or when those that refer to us through our intake line. You'll be able to see on the left-hand side how, when police officers make a connection, what happens? And how we do assessing and family wraparound services. And on the right-hand side, when individuals reference to us themselves or they need help with some sort of resourcing or domestic violence protection order, et cetera. Any questions so far?
Anyone have? I'm sorry.
It's okay. That's okay. Does anybody have any questions, Council?
I have a bunch, but I'll wait till we get to the end then.
Okay. No problem. So here's a little bit more information about what tends to happen when law enforcement calls us out on the scene. So when there is a DV 911 that comes through, officers will either call us while they're en route and say, hey, I'm headed out to a DV 911 call, please stand by, this is kind of the area, just to kind of prep our team. The other thing is that officers might show up on scene. And then, of course, they want to make sure that the scene is safe. They don't want to invite us out on calls where there might be some sort of escalation that might happen. So when we show up on scene, we want to make sure that that location is safe. In some instances, we also Uber people elsewhere if needed, especially for those imminent danger situations where we know this person that is being abusive lives at this house. They are going to return eventually. So it's our goal to get that person out of that house. Short-term, for us to have a conversation with them, for us to be able to create a domestic violence protection order, for us to be able to file that paperwork. We know in many instances, protection orders happen, or I should say DV incidents happen, not during business hours. In many instances, they are weekends. So we understand that in many instances, people feel really trapped in those situations, knowing that I can't even get to the court until Monday. What am I supposed to do until Monday? So a lot of our advocates do help file for protection orders during unconventional hours. We do work on the weekends so that when people get, when courts open on Monday, paperwork is already ready to be filed. We have noticed that this has helped decrease a lot of crisis in which people feel like they're very stuck and they feel really hopeless, thinking like, what am I going to do? I can't even work on any of this alone. And many of those instances also, these are non-English speaking individuals that, I don't know if you've looked at the protection order paperwork, is like a different language. So there was actually a statistic that the protection order advocates told us that for people that try and file on their own, it's about 5% chance that they will get granted an order. I will say, knock on wood, but all of the orders that we have filed, we've been granted. So it is very helpful, I think, for somebody to have a mental health lens, for someone knowing how to help with paperwork in order to get these protection orders granted. So then hopefully that's decreasing future instances of violence again. Other things that we provide to individuals are wraparound services. As mentioned, our goal is to get people into counseling services to be able to really start to look at some of these unhealthy cycles that might live within them or outside of them. There's been a question on, do we help abusers? Yes, we do. If abusers are willing to do treatment and they want to have a lot of these conversations with us, we are open to having those conversations. We understand in many instances, if we don't provide both sides support, there are children that are still going to mirror those experiences. So we can't just pick sides and then being able to then portray an experience to children that, okay, one of my parents gets help and the other doesn't, does that mean half of me is bad? And that's what really contributes to a lot of these violent type situations in the future. The goal is also for our team to remain connected with families. I will say, since starting in 2020, we still talk to a lot of the people that we've helped then and beyond. We want to be able to be still a piece of the community in understanding that in many instances, word of mouth travels and especially in communities of color. So we want to be able to see, be seen as a safe partner as well for community, as well as law enforcement to know that this is going to be a helpful resource to them. Okay. So how does our program help police officers? This is a big question. So of course, in being able to do some of the lifting when it comes to mental health and DV, I think some of the feedback that we've gotten from officers is that they don't have to remain on scene. they don't have to remain on scene if they are, of course, going to arrest someone and then there's still someone in crisis. So they can, of course, kind of tend to the next police duty that's needing to be required of them. Other things that we've noticed is that, you know, officers are human as well. I've showed up on scene alongside officers that, I will be honest, are very triggered and I can tell. In many instances, officers themselves have grown up in households where there is DV. And I think in being able to support alongside them and to provide some space for them to kind of reflect and be seen and be okay in that experience and know that we see them as human is helpful for all our community members. Yeah, also, I will say what was really exciting to see, the city of Renton officers after our first pilot year, let us know that DV recidivism had gone down seven percent. So when, when a department and when a community really sees the resources being helpful, I think that it can really provide opportunities for change. Yes?
Thank you. First of all, I absolutely love your concept. I like it to work with both sides because generally they come back together and go through it all over again, so. Anyway, Council, do we have any questions? Councilmember Tracy.
Thank you. I'm so excited that you're here to present tonight. I've seen the progress in Renton, I've seen it in Kent, but I have a couple of questions about the sustainability of the program. Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, thank you. So as mentioned, like, it's our goal to be a contracted service within cities. We want to be able to essentially do a proof of concept and we essentially provide the funding for that experience for then it, that to be rolled out as like an actual contracted service. I will say, Joelle can attest to this. Like, this month was grant season for us as nonprofits. I think we delivered a total of twenty-one. So our goal is to always continue to write for grants as well as get a foundation that funds us, etc. But it's always to also be a contracted service for continuity of the service to be great, I would say. And also during our pilot, that really gives us the opportunity to see like, what is the call rates based on city? What are the types of calls that we are coming out to? You know, I can't say that the same team that works in Renton is going to work down here in Auburn based on languages or culture. So our goal during the pilot is to be really intentional about seeing what that city needs and then speaking to the city about things that we are noticing. I would say that also we keep lots of data and I know our cities love to see that and just like, here are our stories, here are some experiences, to be able to have these like really fruitful program partnerships.
Thank you. Councilmember Kate Baldwin.
Yeah, I think Councilmember Taylor asked my first question, which is, as a nonprofit, sustainability of the organization is always, can be a challenging thing. I also chair the finance committee, so my question would be, after that initial proof of concept, how do you charge? Is that, I mean, you've got many cities, so is that, what's the nature of the structure for the contract?
Yeah, so it's all based on like, essentially like, in Renton, we looked at the average rate of calls that were coming in. Also, what type of calls that were coming in. I can say in the city of Renton, a lot of our calls are youth DV as well as family-type DV. So that was needing a certain type of provider. I can say in the city of Kent, a lot of our DV calls are substance abuse. So we are, we have a substance abuse counselor that is more so triaged for that city. So when we deliver essentially a price tag of like, this is how much this, it's essentially backed by data and says like, okay, this is how many average calls we are doing weekly. This is how many calls we are doing monthly or yearly. So then you can start, as, community members can start to see like, this would take four or five MHPs or a team to be able to do this service. I will say also on the backend, we do have a DV advocacy program. That's where all of our support groups, counseling services, protection orders, ERPOs, all of that stuff is happening. I will say we work very, very closely with the King County Prosecutor's Office. We're often getting a lot of the bleed over and really just being able to support families because more so the protection order office there is more so focused on intimate partner, whereas we can help families that are actually experiencing violence.
Is there any other questions first, if anybody else? Councilmember Baldwin.
So to stay on that point of the contract, is that we'll take data for a year, predict what we think the average call volume is going to be, and then are we talking monthly charge, annual contract? What's the?
Yeah, I can tell you in the city of Renton, it's a monthly charge.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is that billed after the calls have come in?
Yes.
Okay, so it'd be essentially on a per-call structure?
No. So essentially how that works is that we are on-call for X amount of hours. So it wouldn't be after the experience of like, we only did thirty calls because some months we are doing like seventy calls, some months we're doing like twenty calls. A lot of that is just based on weather, you know, like a little bunch of experiences. So when somebody goes in contract with us, it is just to have like, we need four full-time crisis responders. And that is to be twenty-four-seven, no blackout times, accessible.
But Kate and I are going to go back and forth here. I'm looking at your annual impact report and this is crafted beautifully. It really kind of outlines everything. The amount of DV calls that you served last year alone is quite substantial.
Yes.
Are you on pace to exceed that for 2024? I hate saying that, I hate saying that.
No, it's okay.
But I mean.
It's a funny experience. So yeah, I can say last year we did a total of six hundred and twenty-nine calls. We're on pace this year to do twelve hundred.
Yeah, that's great.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you. I was going to ask in that space, for the data that you collect, do you have a sample of the reports that you'd be preparing at the end? So if we have input on other data that we'd like to be gathered along the way, we could provide that earlier as opposed to at the end?
Of course, yes. Yeah, I have essentially like a form where, it's like our invoice form, where you can see different boxes of things that we are collecting, like substance abuse calls, people connected to mental health counseling, people connected to treatment, outputs, people that got their protection orders. All of those out type puts can be specific to what the city wants, but we do have two different invoices that I'm happy to share.
Great. Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. The percentage of youth, what does, what's that number look like for you? Because you said it was pretty high.
It depends city to city, in all honesty. Currently, in the city of Renton, this last year, we served a total of twenty-nine youth. Out of how many? Oh gosh, we did a hundred and eighty-nine calls in Renton. In the city of Kent, in our four-month pilot, we have served, I think, thirty-seven percent youth. So it very much just depends on the demographic and also the city. I can tell you here, last month was the first year we started here in the city of Auburn. It was twenty-seven percent youth.
What's about the average age?
Eleven to seventeen.
Thank you.
So I wanted to ask a question. So do you ever get called up to the schools or a crisis?
Not yet.
Not yet. I think, you know, in some schools, you're still on the fence about providing DV resources to youth. We would love for schools to open up their doors to us, especially as we feel like there needs to be a lot of prevention work. In many instances, we are supporting youth that are as young as thirteen and are in an abusive relationship already. So I would be eager to have our team more in schools. I will say, in the city of Kent, the school district, one of the high schools is letting us do a healthy relationship class this next month. So it's our goal to be able to definitely make impacts in schools, but we haven't been called out like our crisis teams.
Thank you. Councilmember Trish O'Neal.
So you said you went to Auburn High School?
No.
No.
What high school did you?
In Kent.
In Kent, okay. I thought you, never mind, I'm trying to get you into Auburn High School.
Foreshadowing. I will tell you that our youth outreach specialist presented for the Auburn School District this last month. We are waiting on an MOU.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Sorry to cut you off. Could you go back to the slide that had the sort of flow chart on it for the services with the call routing? So on this diagram, I know on the previous slide, I think it was, there were those things that your organization provides and then the things that your partners provide. Which of these are specifically provided by Project Be Free?
Oh, this all here is Project Be Free. All of the green is us. The things that we refer out for is like, for instance, a youth is going to the detention center. And so we are working with the first center specifically. However, our team doesn't back off. We're still supporting a family during that type of situation. Other things that we'll refer out for is like, if somebody needs an immigration-type U visa, we're still providing support to that family. We just have a partner and an extension that is doing immigration court, that type of thing.
Any other questions?
I have more of a statement. I think you had mentioned briefly that you're really a full service. You start with the victim, you also work with the perpetrator and get him or her into a certain thing, and then you work with the families. I think that's overshadowed by the work that you do. I think it encompasses essentially what a domestic violence situation is. There are multiple layers to that and what the work that you guys do really is full service. So thank you for doing what you do.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I will say, part of the thing that's really exciting for our team is that even if there is an arrest that happens, oftentimes abusers are calling us after the arrest and saying, hey, I've just been released, what do you recommend I do next? So there are instances that we can provide some resources and some stability to, because we know in many instances, families are going to be torn apart no matter the output there. Yeah, or we're coming back together. And my, I always say this to clients, is like, my goal here is not to tell you who to be with or who not to be with, but it's also that this is impacting your children oftentimes. So if we want to be together, how can we be healthier together?
Councilmember O'Neal.
What's the timeframe from when you first go to them and help them out to the end? And the end is when either the woman presses charges and decides to go to court and all this and that? What's, you guys aren't part of that?
I wouldn't say that.
I see you shaking your head.
I wouldn't say that that was the end.
Okay.
Because we also have other, our program is designed to grow with individuals based on their needs. So today might be a protection order and help with the court case, but next month it might be the therapy that they, that they're wanting to experience for their healing, their children, programs, other programs that we're developing to help them personally, financially, other things that we're developing. So like we said earlier, it's more so a community rebuilding project. That's what our yearly symposium is about, getting back together and celebrating and learning new things and sharing time. So it's kind of hard to answer that question directly because we don't really plan and end. The only thing we really want to end is the domestic violence cycles.
It could go on to about a year or so.
Yes.
Yeah, in many instances, like, we just had this happen today, actually, that a woman had got granted her order through us two months ago. And at that time, she was saying, oh no, I don't need the resources, I don't need. Because in many instances, we can't think about the next step unless we're safe, right? So two months later, now she was calling and saying, okay, you know what? I'm seeing my kids are really affected and those resources that you were going to offer me, I think I'd like to take those now. So there is very much like these ebbs and flows of like, you know, we're not going to tell people like, oh, it's three months, we're going to cut you off. It's just this experience of like, everyone has their own story, which is impacted by DV and we want to be meaningful about offering a service.
Well, you said something about helping the women fill out those forms. And I've seen those forms and they are very difficult for somebody that's traumatized and doesn't know how to start. You'd probably show them how to start it, but they probably don't complete it because their minds aren't into that. So I'm glad you said that because I always consider that when it comes to DV, you know, and having somebody there for them.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Our DV advocates actually fill out the paperwork for them. So oftentimes, we're just doing like a screen share or we're doing it over the phone. And I think that really helps give people more power than takes from them and just being able to say like, tell me your story. And in framing it that way, it's easier than just like, help me fill in this box. So I think that's what's helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lamar.
I have a question. First of all, I like the website that how you can click exit and you're gone. So that's one of amazing things. I heard it from the chief, I tried, I like it. My question, how many calls you had respond here in Auburn when you start?
This last month, we did twenty-five.
Last month? Thank you. And second, I hope the website will be, have more language?
Yes, we are working on that. Plug in.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Excuse me, just want to say, I've spoken with the mayors of both Kent and Renton and they had nothing but the highest of praise for the two of you as well as the entire program, the professional manner in which you respond to calls, the way, as you said, you help the officers as well because it can be a triggering event. And the support, your philosophy is very similar to the philosophy that we have here in Auburn about working with individuals who are unhoused. It is not, you're in housing, we're done with you. It's a continuum of care that may not have an end. So I just want to say thank you for the work that you have been doing. Hopefully, you're not busy here in Auburn, but we are a very busy city, as you said earlier. So I just want to publicly say thank you for the work that you are doing. It is tremendous and you deserve a lot of accolades.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I've got two, so let me know if I should just do them in order or not. The first one is, with the data, how do you handle HIPAA privacy? If it's medical, mental health care being provided in some of the situations?
Sure. We don't give information back to cities like names and addresses and that sort of thing. In some instances, they know that, because they're relaying that information to us. They'll already have access to that through the department. But we are not giving information on like, oh, people are talking about this thing in counseling or we're relaying information of like, oh, this is where this person is moving, that sort of thing. So also, we do have a HIPAA encrypted tool that we use. Everyone gets a client ID. After they get input, they are not continued to be named the same experience.
And then my second maybe comment or suggestion is, when Chief first brought this to us, I went through the website and tried calling the number and it went to voicemail. And so I would add maybe one update for your website, which is, if you're only staffing that number kind of within a set timeframe, I think you should convey that on the site because if someone's calling after hours and they're expecting, you know, they just went through the I need help portal to get help, if you're not there, not answering, and that's like their, you know, thirty seconds or one minute of, you know, moment that they have to call, I would hate for those people to feel like they're running into a situation of not having help or not knowing when they can access your team for help.
Happy to make that addition.
One more question. So as far as aftercare, because I used to work with pregnant women and domestic violence, and so I have a question about this. So you go out, crisis, you go out and you help them and everything, you do the protection order. Later down the road, they decide to stay. Then something else happens and later down the road, would you help them again if they've already? already left the program?
Oh, of course.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, in many instances, we also see that someone will leave an abusive relationship and then end up in another one.
Right.
Those are one of the kind of key ways that we can have conversations about like, seems like it's following you. Maybe we should talk about some counseling services.
Any other questions, council?
Just, sorry, one last one if there's time. Does your organization do anything sort of in the moment when it comes to removal of weapons from a home or a site where domestic violence has occurred?
Thank you for that question. I will tell you, we are currently developing a pilot with the prosecutor's office for this. It's not in the, happening yet, but there has been a lot of conversation about gun stuff with us. So, yeah.
Right, because it may be a situation where there's temporary holding or something to sort of take them out of the immediacy of access. So.
That's usually something our officers will do on site.
Perfect. I was going to say, if there's a timeline for that, that'd be great.
But to speak to that, I mean, oftentimes, we do have a lot of those conversations, right? We understand that in a, in a space where somebody does have to relinquish their weapons, it feels like you're just taking my property. And we do see that in many instances, us as a third party, having those conversations about why this is happening, or how to get weapons back, or how to do treatment can open us up for a conversation that can lead to some care. Which is a little foreshadowing of what this pilot is that we're kind of developing.
Sounds good. Any other questions, council? Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Great. Turn it back over to Deputy Brown.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Brown. Not a deputy.
I'm going to put you on another position, okay?
Anyway, thank you so much, Chair Rags. So we'll go back to our agenda and I would request from Councilmember Baldwin if she would be able to give a ready report out.
Sure. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So the Ready Coalition within our last session, there were conversations related to how to better manage and improve the communications from the Ready Coalition. And so that talked about what types of communication exist. So this report out being an example of one mechanism, other examples being, you know, whether that's email or whether that's coming from the mayor's office or the Office of Equity, those different channels. We talked about audiences. We talked about, you know, just started touching on what the pros or cons of those different mechanisms for communication could be and trying to find a way that we can start to explore what the best process will be for that communication as a strategic component of the coalition. So to make sure that it's available, accessible, clear, we talked about the nature of communication as being something that can either be push communication or pull communication. So push being, of course, things that are being sent out to staff or being sent out to the community. And pull being perhaps places where resources could be available and people can go explore them as they are curious or as they're comfortable. And so it was, you know, very much focused on that. We don't have a final approach set in stone because, you know, unfortunately, we don't get to put 40 hours a week to it with the coalition. But with our incremental sessions that we do have, I expect more to be coming out in that topic. That's all we've got.
Does anyone have any questions from Councilmember Baldwin? Nope. All right. Thank you very much for that good report. I appreciate your work on Ready Coalition.
I appreciate your work, sir.
Thank you. And we'll buy each other a drink later on. All right. So next up in our agenda, items for council discussion, we have Resolution Number 5762, which is headed up by Director Gao. This resolution authorizes the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with King County related to four higher transportation services. So I see you've already passed it off.
And I have. Jacob Sweeting will be up there again to tell you about this. And also Item B on the agenda, they're one in the same, but they are two different steps in the process.
All right. Thank you.
Long time no see. So this is going to be fairly straightforward, quick topic here. So Resolution 5762 and Ordinance 6940 are related to more higher vehicles and the regulations that King County provides for the City of Auburn. So a brief summary of who these regulations apply to. These are transportation network companies known as rideshares. So Uber's going to get mentioned twice tonight. Uber and Lyft are examples of these rideshare programs. The regulations apply to these companies. And what King County does to regulate the drivers of these rideshare programs is first, the drivers have to apply, be accepted through the actual rideshare company, and then King County requires that the drivers complete a defensive driving course. The regulations also apply to taxis, taxi drivers. And the requirements are that King County issues a written exam. They have to pass the written exam. Then they also have to pass a background check and then once again, take a defensive driving course. So King County, in the regulations, they require that each driver goes through an application process, endorsement process, and then issues decals that are placed on the driver's vehicles to show that they have met the King County requirements. King County then enforces not only the county code, but the city code related to the rideshare and the taxi drivers. And then King County collects and retains the fines and the fees. So Resolution 5762 authorizes the execution of an interlocal agreement with King County to provide these regulations or these services. Currently, we already have an interlocal agreement with King County that was executed in 2004, so they've already been providing these services. So the reason that we are entering or seeking a new agreement is because King County has revised their code. They're modernizing their code. They're consolidating it. They're updating some of the processes and they're actually creating a new code section related to these services. So they've requested that we update the agreement to refer to these new code sections. And the interlocal agreement doesn't require us to pay any fees or any costs to King County to provide these services. But the code, the King County code sections are referred to in our current Auburn City Code in Section 5.20. So that's where Ordinance 6940 comes into play, which will actually update our city code to refer to the new King County code that was passed. So the two go hand in hand. So the next steps will be next week. We will bring the resolution for, the resolution and the ordinance for adoption. Assuming that goes through, then we will proceed with executing the interlocal agreement. And then King County will continue to regulate those activities here in Auburn. Any questions?
Do we have any questions, councilmembers?
Good report.
All right. So I guess unless you've already completed Item B, the ordinance part of this yet, do you still have stuff to cover there?
No, they're both combined in this presentation, so I think we're good on that.
Yes.
I have one question. There was a community member who reached out that self-identified as a dasher, speaking to Seattle's delivery law, which I'm curious if that is in any way directed through King County's regulations or is that Seattle-specific? Are you familiar?
Well, a lot of the King County regulations do mimic what's in the Seattle laws. The specifics of how it applies to a DoorDash-type driver, I'm not certain on that.
It was, it's related to a mandated hourly earnings requirement. Is that something that?
I don't see that in the King County code.
I was going to say, I didn't see it in any of the materials for today. So, okay. Just checking. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, I think that's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have Item C, Ordinance Number 6937. Director Thomas is coming up to see us in person.
In person? We are doing.
So just for the council members, this is an ordinance amending the city's 2023, 2024 biennial operating and capital budgets.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor, Mayor and Council. I feel like we were just talking about budget a few days ago. We're here to review the first budget amendment of 2024, but it's actually the fourth budget amendment of the biennium. And the, this first budget amendment of the year has three primary components. That's carrying forward unspent budget that we still need to spend in 2024. So that's the carryforward component. We're also adding new programs that have new offsetting revenue. So new grant awards, typically we don't get finalized grant awards until the beginning of the year. So when we're putting our budgets together, we don't have a solid revenue figure. This is where we get caught up with those, all of those new grant awards and the related expenditures to run the, run the programs that the revenues support. And then we have a couple of new or enhanced programs that we're also asking for. Starting with the general fund, we have three primary changes. We have three, a little over $3.3 million in carryforward items from 2023. There's 11 items in total. 2.6 million of that, so the large majority of that carryforward is related to unspent ARPA projects. When we look at the quarterly report a little bit later, you're going to see that there's a larger unspent ARPA portion, and that's because there's two types of ARPA projects. There's programs that are not capital-related, and then there's capital-related programs. So this is a good moment to let the council know, for those of you that may have forgotten or didn't know, that when it comes to capital budgets, those automatically roll over. We don't bring those capital project budgets to council for consideration. So they automatically roll over if they're ongoing projects. So the $2.6 million you see here are non-capital ARPA projects that don't automatically roll over. We also have one, almost $1.9 million in new programs with new revenue. So those are the grants, mostly the grants that I was referring to. There's 11 items. Eight of them are grants totaling $771,000. And then we also have our skip funding and the operational piece of skip for $1.1 million. I'm going to call this out a little bit only because we currently have it in our budget, asking council to adopt these skip funds, but it's, because it's embedded in our general fund, we're working on ways to move forward later in this year to pull skip out and account for it separately in its own skip fund, because it's really not City of Auburn money to approve and designate. It's the skip board that actually decides how that money's spent. So right now, this is more of a formality just to get, give us the approval to write the checks on their behalf. And then the third piece is $375,000 in new programs. And this, again, this is for the general fund only, and there is only two items. I did make a note for the general fund, all of these requests, because they are grants, one-time grants, revenues as well as carryforward items, and new programs are all one-time in nature. None of these are ongoing impacts to the general fund. And so then that's, that's when I show you the busy chart with a list of all of the things that we're asking for. Skip right there is at the top. The top three things are those skip fundings. Again, that's not really for the City of Auburn to decide how that money is spent. We just happen to be the custodian of those funds and we need that authority to write the checks. And then we have a long list of grants there that you can see. So offsetting revenues for the expenditures that has a zero net impact on the general fund. And then the two new programs in the general fund is the A Street Hedge Reduction Program for $125,000. We've done some remedial work over the last couple of years to try to contain that hedge along A Street that blocks the Burlington Northern Railroad yard there. It's time to get a little bit more aggressive just because of the safety issues that it's posing, and so that's going to cost $125,000. And then the second piece is the council chamber equipment upgrades. There's some equipment in this room that is starting to age and needs replacement for, to be able to continue doing our council meetings and the public broadcasting piece and making our council meetings available to the public. This money is actually used with restricted money that we have in the general fund specifically for public education and programming. So we collect money from cable companies. It's a tax that they pay that they pass on to, on to consumers, but it is a tax that's mandated by the F, the FTC?
FCC.
FCC, that requires that, that cities provide public access to government, to government channels. So that's, it's a requirement that we make the meetings public, and this is how we pay for it. Total net impact with all of those new requests is 360, just a hair under $366,000 to the general fund. Then we've got carryforward items totaling $3.3 million. These, again, are all programs that have been previously approved by council. We just were not able to complete them in 2023. We still need to complete them, so we're carrying them forward into 2024.
On the ARPA funds, is there a certain timeframe that that money has to be used by?
There's a certain timeframe for us to report the spend down to the federal government, yes. And so if you recall, what we've done from, from a reporting standpoint, we are reporting public safety salaries to claim that $14 million that we, that we were awarded in ARPA money. However, as a council, we had a much more detailed plan about how to use that. We didn't want to use it just as generally as public safety salaries. So we are, that's where we created the list, and that actually gives us a little bit more flexibility in the timing of our spend down and a little bit more flexibility in being able to follow our own policies too when it comes to contracting requirements rather than defaulting to the federal government's compliance requirements areas for ARPA spending. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay. So we'll move on to all of the other funds. And that is, so every fund other than the general fund, all those other cups that we talked about a couple of weeks ago. There's $379,000 in carryforward items, which are six items, $6.7 million in programs with new revenue. We had a couple of pretty large grants, particularly in our transportation funds, and $1.5 million in new, new programs outright. There's eight of those items. So here's this list. This is just the list for all of the other funds. I organized it in order between the carryforward items, the grant-funded items, and the new one-time items. So I'm going to jump, I'm going to, I'm going to point out again, we, I told you that we had a couple of large grant awards, and that kind of feeds into a little bit of what you see then in the new programs at the bottom. So we had originally, for a couple of our large projects, we hit, we're relying on impact revenue out of mitigation fees, out of the impact, impact fees out of the mitigation fund to fund some of those large transportation projects. We got additional grant money that freed up some of those impact fees, and that worked out well because for a couple of our projects that are in 21st Street Southeast Roundabout and the Lee Hill Road, the Lee Hill Road and 104th project did require an increase in, an increase in those projects. And so we were able to use some of that freed up impact fee funding that we didn't otherwise have. And then we are also adding to the Cedar Lane's pump track park, $150,000 as a new project. We are also using park impact, park impact fees for that. So with the transportation projects, we're using transportation impact fees for the, for the Cedar Lane's pump track, we are using park impact fees for that. Another one, oh, go ahead.
Can you take a question?
I could take a question, yes.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you, Chair. I was going to ask about the new line item for the insurance premiums.
That was exactly what I was about, about to say. I didn't want to call that one out. When we did our budget in 2324, we knew that we were having some pretty significant insurance premium increases. We were not the only city. All of the cities in our region were experiencing premium increases, particularly through WCIA, who is our insurance carrier. And we had budgeted for some pretty, like actually a $1.1 million increase between 2023 and 2024. So we were pretty close with our estimate of what So we were pretty close with our estimate of what we think what we thought that 2024 premium was going to be. The actual premium cost had come in $135,000 greater than what we had budgeted.
Councilmember rates.
Thank you. Under the new, maybe not the new one, but under the new, it says tourism grant. Is that new? Is that something that we're specifically using for?
Yeah, so that is using the hotel mode that's in the hotel motel tax fund. So the special revenue fund has to use be used specifically for tourism. And the LTAC board had asked that we dedicated $85,000 for grants to promote tourism and hotel stays in the city. Okay. And so next steps, barring any questions or concerns, would be to adopt the budget amendment next Monday night on April 15.
Right. Any other questions?
I just.
Go ahead.
I just have a comment. I'm so glad to see those hedges. Either you're going to cut them down lower, or they're just going to leave.
I'll be the key group of the hedge. Where there's entrances and exits out of the rail yard for different businesses, the lower section, and then we'll try to trim back the non-site areas as much as the contracted amount allows.
That was kind of scary when during campaigning, because we would go out there and put signs around there. There'd be homeless people living in there. I woke a couple of them up, and it scared me, and so I laughed. But so I'm really happy to hear that those are going to be taken care of. Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions? See no other questions being asked. I guess we can proceed to the next item. That would be the fourth quarter financial report.
Yes. It was a short trip up here for this one. I am just going to foreshadow that a lot of this is probably going to look familiar, not only to our previous three quarterly reports, a lot of the that we've seen earlier this year, a lot of the trends have been the same. But a lot of it is also going to be review of the numbers that we went over a couple of weeks ago. So general fund overview, we've collected 12% more revenue in total in our general fund compared to budget and 21% more than we collected in revenue last year. And this is comparing full year. And then we have underspent our expenditure budget by 14%. And we have spent 9% more than we did last year. So we had we had more budget authority than we ended up spending, but we are spending more than we did last year. A lot of that does have to do with some of that ARPA money. We've started increasing our spend down of the ARPA money a little bit more here in 2023. And yes, I'm going to go with the revenues. We'll go into more detail of the all the major revenue categories as well as the expenditures. But overall, keep in mind too, the the carry forward items too, that we just went over. So you do see that we have some of that that revenue that looks like or some of the expenditures that it looks like we have underspent, but some of that, not all of it, but some of it, we are asking to carry forward into into 2024 as well. So as always, just reviewing our tax revenue, our total taxes in the general fund budgeted in 2023 accounts for $68.8 million or 75% of the general fund budget. Property tax, which makes up 35% of that tax bucket, is budgeted at $24 million, and we collected all $24 million. So we we didn't we collected just a little bit over, but mostly we were right on what we had levied, and we collected that. For retail sales and use tax, that makes up 30% of our taxes. We had $20.3 million budgeted in 2023, and we collected 339,000 more, so 1% more, almost 1 and 1/2% more from the prior year. And we did collect $2.6 million more than budgeted. As a reminder, we did budget for our recession in sales tax for 2023. And it wasn't really until the end of the year, the second half of the year, that we really started to see some of those increases not increasing as quickly as they have in the past couple of years. And that's where we ended the year with 1%, just a little over 1% from the prior year. So we are seeing a decline in that sales tax growth when we're comparing quarter over quarter, which is what we need to be mindful for when we're putting together the 2526 biennial budget. To look at more detail of the sales tax revenue, there this looks very similar every quarter. I think all of the categories that that I think that you could almost carbon copy the percent changes in each of the categories from quarter to quarter. Construction has been pretty stable and pretty consistent over the the year, same as the automotive and the services categories. Those are have been our top three performing categories all throughout the year. And then again, the manufacturing category is down from the previous year, and that had to do with the previous year correction that overinflated to 2022's numbers, making it look like we're underperforming in 2023, but we're we're not. You remove that one-time correction, and manufacturing is right about actually, it's up by about 1%. So utility taxes, those make up 20% of all of our taxes. We budgeted $14.4 million in 2023. Our utility tax rate for water, sewer, storm, and solid waste is 9%. And for our external utilities, electric, natural gas, cable, and telephone utility is a 5% rate. Those are the rates that go into the general fund. We do collect extra percentages that go into our into our street funds. We are over budget, and we're also overperforming from prior year, and that is related to two different two different things. One is we've got our it's the solid waste tax that we're collecting since we've transferred our services, and we've got waste management as our billing agent. The costs they're now paying, they have a higher retail rate, and so the tax that they're paying is higher. The revenue that they're collecting is higher. That's leading to a higher tax collection, but also because we started collecting water, sewer, storm tax from water, sewer, storm providers outside of the city, but they have customers that have that are our Auburn residents. So we are collecting that that utility tax from those providers now as well. Moving on to BNO tax, it was budgeted, the the $5.5 million budget makes up for 8% of our total taxes. I think the number ended up being 10% when we look at what we actually collected for 2023, which was $10.6 million. 6.7 of that is in grocery, the gross receipts tax, $3.9 million of that was in the square foot tax, square footage tax. I did miss one quarter. I have on this slide listed quarter four, 2022. It should also include quarter three of 2023 as well. So we've got a total of four quarters of BNO tax and one round of annual filers, the 2022 annual filer. So this is the first complete year where we're capturing a complete set of BNO tax revenue, and we ended $5 million over our original budget that for BNO tax. Other taxes make up 8%. We budgeted $4.4 million. That includes criminal justice sales tax, which is a portion of the sales tax that the state collects and they share with us, admissions tax, gambling tax, leasehold excise tax, and franchise fees. And we ended the year and the prior year collections over budget, and more than what we collected in the previous year. And both of those variances are primarily due to a higher sales tax collection on the criminal justice sales tax from the state. That makes up about $678,000 of the amount that we collected over budget. Moving away from taxes and into licensing and permits, it accounts for 3% of our general fund budget. And we of the $2.5 million that we budgeted, we have collected $339,000 more than budget and $575,000 over the prior year. So we did, I think, a pretty good job of budgeting. We also had budgeted for a recession on the permitting side of things, knowing that we would expected to see lower activity in or expected to see less activity in in building permits. And so we budgeted accordingly. We did end up overperforming what we had originally budgeted by $318,000. $257,000, though, of that prior year of the increase over the prior year is related to our business licenses. And I think I've talked about it a couple of times. There's two primary drivers for those business tax or for the business license collections. One is that we've moved our licensing system to the BLS, the business licensing system that this Washington State DOR manages. We just get a higher reporting through DOR, because it's kind of a one-stop shop for businesses who are getting renewals for their business licenses, and not just the City of Auburn, but all cities throughout the state. And then also the discovery that we've had through the BNO tax rollout and just finding businesses who are trying to report BNO tax, but they don't have a business license. So they have to get their business license first, and then they pay their BNO tax. So a lot, a lot of discovery through that process. And then no, on the budgeting side, going back to the building permits, we have seen actually an increase in the total number of building permits, but the value of those building permits is is significantly lower than in prior years. So we're seeing a good amount of activity, but just not the really large projects that that we like to see. So then we move into intergovernmental revenue. This is the only slide that has all red on it, which is a good thing. This includes all of our grants, whether it's federal, state, local, our muckle shoot Indian tribe compact, and then state shared revenue from the states. So state shared revenue includes the straight the streamlined sales tax, which is decreasing every year, our motor vehicle excise tax, marijuana and liquor excise taxes, and criminal justice sales tax as well. The two significant reasons for our underperformance to budget has to do with the timing of our final payment from the the tribe for our compact agreement by $300,000. So that's just the timing thing. We've actually received the money as of today. It just wasn't hadn't been recorded yet. And then the reduction in the streamlined sales tax mitigation. So that was 270 $257,000 less than budgeted. We have adjusted our 2024 budget, so we shouldn't see a large variance in 2024 like we did in 2023. There was one more, and that's the timing and the collection of grant revenue. So we've got more but grant revenue budgeted than we actually collected. That doesn't mean we won't collect it. We just don't bill for that revenue until we've actually spent it. So we haven't spent the money yet, so we haven't collected the money either. And all of the same, those are all the same explanations for why our our collections to date compared to the prior year are also lower. Charges for services, our general governmental were $409,000 below budget. Again, that has the I think this is the same reason that's been on this slide all year long. It's just the timing of reimbursements from skip and from the contributing cities to skip and how and the timing of collecting that money from other cities. Public safety is $161,000 above budget. There's two things driving this. There was a large catch up in some private business security that took place towards the end of the year. So we're getting caught up on some of those billings and collecting that money for those services. And then our DUI emergency response fees, this is these are the fees that the city is able to collect on DUI cases to help us recoup our court costs and our legal costs related to DUI cases. A lot of this has to do with this was something that King County used to manage. They quit managing. Now we've managed it, and we finally have a really good program in place and a system in place to kind of keep following these cases until they are paid. Development services is $11,000 above budget. So again, this is all tied to permitting activity. This is the inspection side, mostly the inspection side of those permits that developers are applying for. And then culture and recreation, our hats off to parks are in recreation. They are $742,000 above above budget, and it's really related to the same two things that it has been all year, which is increased green fees and pro shop sales. Those are up 116,000 or 8% compared to the previous year. And as well as our recreation classes and special events are also up $135,000 compared to the previous year as well. So now looking switching gears really quick and looking at the the general fund expenditures by department. There's some departments have a little bit more variance. When you're looking at community development and the housing and homelessness outreach, those are the two departments that have really the largest underspends or the largest percentage unspent of their budget. And there's a lot of there's ARPA money in those funds. So you're going to see that's where some of the carry forward is coming from is out of some of their programs. And for the internal services, we've got HR, finance, legal, and non-departmental, and that large $7.4 million in underspend there is for those capital ARPA projects that will automatically will automatically carry forward. So if you take into account all of the ARPA money that we are going to be carrying forward, whether it is capital projects or programs, we are closer to spending, we'll be spending down up to about $99 million, not $92.7 million. So if you're trying to check our fund balance and how much extra money is left at the end, there's not quite as much as this as this slide would reflect. Here is a summary of our ARPA update and looking at what we've spent life to date for each of these projects, as well as what we've spent in quarter four. We've spent $568,000 on ARPA projects in quarter four and life to date. So since 2021, we have spent $4.3 million, and we have a little over $10 million left on our ARPA projects. Going moving away from general fund activity, I always like to call out our real estate excise tax, because we fund a lot of our large one-time projects with REIT. We've collected $3.5 million this year. It is less than last year. The housing market did cool a bit. Prices have continued to increase, but inventory and sale volume has decreased. And so even though it was less than the prior year, we did finish $1.3 million over over our budget for REIT. And then this is the slide that I add for our quarter four report. I don't usually talk about our enterprise funds on a quarterly basis until we get to the end of the year, so we can kind of look just once at the end of the year, what our our major enterprise funds are doing. So water, sewer, and storm funds all ended the year with operating income, $5.4 million, $3.4 million, and $2 million respectively. The ending fund balances were $17.4 million, $15.6 million, and $16.1 million. All of their fund, all the fund balances for each of those utilities did end higher than originally budgeted. And in those sub-bullet points, I explain why they ended higher than what was budgeted. In the water fund, it was due to unspent capital items. Those capital items, as I mentioned before, do automatically carry forward. So a lot of that fund balance that is sitting there will be accounted for in the carry forward budget amendment to to continue those capital programs and those capital projects. In the water fund, the sewer fund ended over budget with more fund balance than budgeted due to unspent professional services, lower taxes than we had originally budgeted budgeted, and then also unspent capital projects. And then stormwater was $2.6 million over the budgeted fund balance due to greater collection of interest and service fees than originally budgeted. And then the solid waste utility I pulled out separately, since waste management operates that for us. We did have an operating loss of $560,000, and our overall ending fund balance was $2.1 million. So even though that sounds bad, that's exactly how we had budgeted. We had budgeted for the operating loss. We in order to smooth out rates for ratepayers, we intended to eat some of the the ending fund balance. We had accumulated a pretty large fund balance. And in order to smooth rates for customers, we relied on some of that fund balance to keep those rates down. So it looked it's an operating loss, but we actually ended in a better position than we had budgeted for. That is end of that.
Right. Does the council have any questions? Yes, council member.
Thank you. So I think looking at our tax revenue slides, I think it's five and six for our utilities. So I think looking at our tax revenue slides, I think it's five and six for our utilities and then BNO. It seems like we're positioned fairly well with where we are right now with that. Is that as part of the capital projects that are coming up to just sort of hold our extra until those come in, or what's the plan there?
So when we did our, when we did our budget amendment three, which was our mid-biennial true-up that we did in November, one of the main components of that budget amendment was taking into account any changes in revenue, our major revenue sources. So we did increase our budget for utility tax in particular to kind of more trend with what we're seeing as reality. So that's already essentially accounted for in our 2024 budget. If you recall, that trend line that we see of revenues increasing, but just not increasing at the same rate of expenditures, we're not relying on this as one-time revenue. We're relying on this as we need it for sustaining operations. So we still, this is helping us, will help us match our actual general fund expenditures that we have budgeted. Not, we're not planning on using it as a one-time source of this. We do need to rely on this to sustain the budget.
All right. Any other questions? I think, I think we're done.
All right.
Thank you very much. Good presentation. We have one more item on the agenda, and that's from the special focus area, municipal services. And I'll hand it back over to council member and chair Cheryl.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Brown. So next we have the municipal services, King County Court presentation with Director Martenson and Presiding Judge Rebecca Robertson presenting on the King County District Court Services.
Thank you so much. I'm so happy she did that because I was really afraid I wouldn't know how to work this. So first, I wanted to thank Mayor Bacchus so much for having us be here today. I really appreciate that. And thank you to the council as well. And a special thank you to Candace Martenson, who, A, helped me do this technology and has been so helpful as we work through this process. I'm Rebecca Robertson. I'm the Chief Presiding Judge of King County District Court. I've been a judge for 14 years. Before I came to King County District Court in 2021, I was a Federal Way Municipal Court Judge for 12 years. So I've had a lot of experience in both municipal and district courts. So we are so proud and happy to serve the citizens of Auburn as providing your municipal court, I'm sorry, your judicial services to the municipality of Auburn. We are very invested in Auburn's community, and we appreciate you having us here today. As I'm sure most of you know, there's three branches of government where you're mostly silent. Co-equal branch of government, the judicial branch, so we have the power to make judgments on the law. The executive, like Mayor Bacchus, has the power to put law into action. Under the executive is the prosecutors, the defense attorneys, your public works department, et cetera. Then we have the legislative branch, which is you, the council. So the reason that judicial independence is so important is to make sure that your citizens know that they will get decisions from the bench that are free from inappropriate political influence, and they're crucial to public trust. We have separation of powers in the institutional independence. We run our own affairs, et cetera, as well as decisional independence. So just as I couldn't tell you guys what laws to enact, the other branches can't tell us what kind of decisions to make on the benches. So this is the same as the federal court system, the state system, and King County. And here's Auburn. That is your three branches of government. And again, we are so proud to serve Auburn. Your two current-serving judges in the city of Auburn is Judge Virginia Amato, who hears the Auburn cases, and Judge Lea Taguba, who hears the city cases. They are here on Zoom today. Here with me today is my Assistant Presiding Judge Karina Harn and our Director of Operations, Diana Philippides. Judges Amato and Taguba have years of experience between them. The Southeast Electoral Division, from where Auburn draws its judges, is actually quite large. There are six judges, that's a third of our bench, I'm sorry, a quarter of our bench that's drawn from the Southeast Electoral District. So any of these judges may rotate through the city of Auburn and provide services for the city of Auburn. Our mission statement in King County District Court is to provide an accessible forum for the fair, efficient, and understandable resolution of civil and criminal cases and maintain an atmosphere of respect and dignity for all. And we try as much as we can to do that. There are 25 of us elected by Electoral District. The Southeast Division, I'm circling it a little bit here, is the geographical largest, and that's where you get all six of your judges. So all six judges are actually elected out of your community. They also have, here at King County District Court, we have 25 judges. We actually have nine out of the 25 are judges of color, and four out of the 25 are self-identified LGBTQ plus judges. So we reflect the diversity of the community. As many studies have shown, if you have a more diverse decision-making body, you make better decisions. So the decisions that we make are made with all 25 of our very diverse, of our very diverse bench. And we are very thankful and lucky that we can have such a representative body. With these 25 judges, we are also able to fill in for Auburn when a judge here goes on vacation. So I'll pull judges from the Southwest or the Northeast to come down to Auburn to fill in, so there won't be substitute unelected judges. We have three geographic divisions. Again, you're in the South Division with the MRJC and Burian. We have courthouse locations all over the county. There's actually nine. Seattle has two, Seattle Jail and a regular Seattle courthouse. Auburn is the next closest location is the MRJC. We have 13 contracting cities that we work with. We have an elected judicial leadership committee. So it's myself and Judge Harn are the chief presiding, and assistant presiding in each division has their elected presiding judge as well. We take pride in being interactive with our community as a whole and go to represent King County District Court and what we do and the services that we can provide at a lot of different community events across the county. So we are very involved. The matter that we handle here in Auburn are the criminal cases, which take up the bulk of the cases, the simple and gross misdemeanors, protection orders such as anti-harassment, stalking, domestic violence, et cetera. So when the folks here from the Bee Free Project need to get a protection order, they can come right down to the Auburn courthouse and do that early Monday morning. We have our community court, infractions, the traffic and the non-traffic parking, small claims up to $10,000, and name changes, all that are handled in the Auburn District Court. The additional services that King County District Court provides are we have judge-supervised probation, so we have an entire probation department that uses resources both in Auburn and amongst each other. So there's a lot of probation officers that can feed each other information and help each other make decisions. The community court is funded by mid-budget, so none of that comes from the city of Auburn. It's all from the county's mid-budget. And we have interpreters from 92 different languages, and we have an online scheduling system so that we can easily gather interpreters when needed. Most of our judicial time, of course, is spent on our criminal cases. The infractions take one hearing. The criminal matters can take multiple hearings for more than five years, and that's post conviction. They're more serious by definition, and there are a lot of liberty interests and constitutional rights that are implicated in these criminal cases. And so the judges here in Auburn, as well as all of our judges, really draw on each other's expertise to help make sure that we're protecting all the constitutional rights of the folks here in the city of Auburn. Our goals and tools, of course, our goals are to stop criminal behavior, and we try to be as data-driven as we can possibly be about what will actually stop criminal behavior. A lot of it is, of course, out of our control and unfortunately out of your control and out of the mayor's control. There are a lot of things that are happening in all these communities that have made crime more prevalent, made it more difficult. We understand that, and we're trying to work through it as to how best we respond to those things. We, of course, have the jail, fines, electronic home monitoring, community service and restitution. We also utilize a significant amount of rehabilitation services for alcohol, drugs, anger management, sexual deviancy, a lot of mental health, educational classes, et cetera, that we can have people do to try and curb their criminal behavior or address the behavior that's causing them to commit crimes. Our funding is from the King County General Fund, the city contracts that we have, as well as the mid-budget and the county veterans, seniors, and human services levate, which fuels our therapy of courts. This is the King County 2023 caseload, 175,000 cases. So that's a significant amount of work that we're doing on behalf of the county. Here's Auburn's caseload. I'm sorry, this is the King County five-year caseload, and you can show it's, we can show it's trending up after COVID. COVID was a really difficult time, and filings went down. It's now trending back up. And the same is happening with Auburn. Here you can see the filings that you guys have. This number you should pay attention to, there's been a significant amount more parking filings. So when you look at this graph, it looks like, oh my gosh, you're filing so many more cases. Most of this is, a lot of this is parking, but the filings are going up. Auburn Community Court, which we are so happy to have participating in community court with Auburn, there are 21 participants graduated, there are 23 active participants. Significantly, there has been almost 2,000 visits to the Resource Center. You can see those other significant numbers there. We have several graduations, and it's been such a successful program that we're celebrating three years and thinking of expanding this program. 29 of the participants were housed in their time with Auburn Community Court, which is huge. And King County is actually going to feature Auburn's Community Court in a story about Therapeutic Courts Month for the city council. So it's a model court at this point, the community court is. I wanted to show you the score inmate population. I know I talked the last time about that Auburn kind of has a lot more people in jail than maybe other jurisdictions. This is, that fluctuates. It could be two times more per population. Sometimes it's a little less, sometimes it may be a little more. But score jail does, about half of score jail is Auburn folks.
Of the owner cities, not of the total population.
Yes, that's correct. So some cities use several different jails. So I'm going to talk about the continued work that we've done with Auburn. I will let you know that COVID, the COVID recovery has gone very well for King County District Court. We actually have no backlog whatsoever. We worked all through that in mid-2023. The COVID pandemic did cause some changes in the criminal justice system. There are a lot of warrants that were not issued because the jails were telling us not to book people because of the increased safety risk for them. We've overcome that. There's a lot of other technology that we have been able to use, Zoom, it's things like that, to increase access to justice that we learned from the COVID pandemic. The things that we're continuing to work with Auburn are meeting with the city defense and the judges to discuss reworking the calendars to create more space for Auburn and to make things more sense, make more sense for all parties. We actually have our third meeting tomorrow morning. So we're coming back down tomorrow morning, and those meetings have been going really well. We moved a new manager into place in Auburn and who's very experienced, and things have been going very well with her in getting things changed that we need to change. We're working with Covington to either move to the RJC or adjust some calendars to give Auburn more space. At a minimum, we can move them to a half-day a week rather than a full day. We're moving some civil cases to other locations to create some more space for Auburn. We moved small claims trials to the Burian, and so on the small numbers of cases that actually go to trial, we're moving those to Burian. We can take that full half-day calendar space and use it for Auburn criminal cases. We're scheduling an in-person meeting to have all persons just come and complete a lease agreement rather than shoving paper back and forth to each other via email, which has been a little bit difficult to get that done. And we're changing some forms to increase efficiency, to make it more clear what kind of hearings people have the ability to, to have the right to, so that we maybe reduce the amount of people coming in and needing hearings in court time. They can simply handle their traffic infractions by a written hearing, et cetera. So we're still working on it, and we're committed to working on making Auburn the best that it can be. And I'm very happy to be working with Candace and with the prosecutor's office and the defense attorneys and our judges to make sure that we can make it as efficient as possible. So thank you again. I rushed through that. I know it's really late, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions you have about the services that we provide. Any questions, council?
I, I'm speechless. It sounds really nice, everything that you're doing, moving, moving courts around and everything to make room for our cases, because I know I was kind of shocked when we heard we had such a backup. And it's really going to be nice to see how you're going to develop this new court system here, making the rooms and everything. That's just amazing.
Thank you. It's, it's been really nice to actually sit down and work with your folks and make sure that we can make this happen, or we can, there's other spaces we can fill in to handle some backlog. I'm actually coming to handle several infraction calendars myself down here to make it work. So we are committed to making that happen.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Councilmember.
Yeah. So I think, I know within our community, we hear a lot from residents about, you know, prevalence of crime, increase of crime, you know, how to address car thefts, catalytic converter thefts, all of the different things that are happening. I believe I just read in the Seattle Times recently that some of the new laws around sale of those metals used in catalytic converters have actually finally started to decrease some of that type of crime, which I think everybody is wanting that to go away as much as it can. When we think about the justice system, you know, as we had at the beginning, we've got the separation of powers between the city, between the judiciary. Where do we see need, where do you see need the most to make sure that crime is being addressed and people are getting justice in a timely fashion? So it looks like from a case perspective, we have got plenty of cases that are coming forward to the courts. Your caseloads are there, you're working through the backlog, you're making the changes to move through that body of work. I think it may be speaking to the outcomes that happen at the end of a case or at the end of a trial, the end of an infraction. How are we doing with recidivism, repeat offenders? What do you see in that area, and what do you see those needs as being?
Those statistics are kind of difficult to come by post-COVID because there's been such a sea change with the backlog. So it might be a little while before we can actually get good data on recidivism now that things have moved back. We're moving towards a very new normal. What I can tell you is that failures to appear are less because we have the option of Zoom Court. Failures to appear are also less because there's a new court rule which allows attorneys to appear on their client's behalf instead of hauling them back into court all the time. But collaboration between the parties is still important because we have Zoom Court and attorneys appearing on folks' behalfes, it sometimes lengthens the amount of time it takes to get to a disposition. So continued collaboration with the other partners in the criminal justice system is really important to kind of identify where little problems may be and work on how we're going to solve those problems. As far as outcomes, that's, we know that recidivism is reduced if we can address the underlying issues, so we've been focusing on that significantly. I know that we give people options for treatment a lot, but sometimes that doesn't work. And I've been told many, many times, thank you for putting me in jail, it saved my life. And so continuing to collaborate and get data on who is going to be amenable to treatment and who is not is very important. So we're reworking our entire system E Court that we use to be able to gather more data because we no longer have access to the state system, and it's not super reliable regarding data, so that we can gather this data to really manage our practices.
And then another question that I had is, I had heard that there are some new recommendations coming in as far as caseloads for King County prosecutors. I I believe being down, I think, is 100 cases per prosecutor as opposed to where it had been previously?
It was the public defenders.
Public defenders.
Yeah.
Thank you. Do you know what effects that may have going into the future?
That will have significant budgetary effects if that goes into effect. We need more defense attorneys. There is a significant crisis in the state. We don't have as many as we need. We don't have as many prosecutors as we need. If they lower the case standards, that means we need even more to be able to handle the cases that we need. So that is going to have a significant financial effect on cities and counties. So I would encourage you to make your voices heard when the powers that be are discussing those standards. I believe that's going to be the State Supreme Court, and so are the judges who work in the trenches and understand how everything works. But we do have a public defender crisis here in the state. King County is currently working with all of our member cities to try and pool them so that we can pool resources for defense attorneys, for conflict attorneys, and for regular public defense attorneys. So even municipal courts that we don't, we don't cover. We're trying to partner with other actual standing municipal courts so we can try and solve this problem. We can only convene these meetings. Under court rule, we're not really allowed to be involved too much, but we recognize that it's a problem, so we want to convene everyone. Any other questions?
Going to say, on the slide where it showed all of those parking tickets, I don't want you to think that parking enforcement has just gone crazy. That is the photo enforcement.
Including.
Yes. That's, and that increases because of the photo enforcement.
Photo enforcement is considered parking tickets under, they're treated like parking tickets under state law, so they don't appear on your traffic record. And that, that's the notice that we're revising to make sure everyone knows what their options are. So everyone doesn't come to court to just ask for a reduced fine. They can do that by mail. So that reduces the amount of court time we have to spend on that. I know. I have that. Not you. I have the, does not, does not affect your driving record on like four different places in the revised notice because that is really important to people.
Could you go back to the services slide one more time, please?
Sure.
Eighteen, maybe?
Eighteen. I don't have the numbers here, but I think it's. Right here?
Yes.
Okay.
So within this space, because we are working with your organization, King County, to manage our judicial services, what are the things on here that we would lose as services if we were switching back into municipal courts that was managed through the city as opposed to through King County?
So you would lose the protection orders. Protection orders would no longer be heard in a municipal court. They, by law, cannot hear those. So those folks would have to go to another courthouse, probably MRJC, Burian, maybe Pualup to some courthouse that's a district court. We would not, you would not be able to do small claims. And we do a lot of small claims pre-trial where we have the dispute resolution center actually come in as a free service. We pay them and help people mediate their disputes. So most of the time, these disputes between folks are mediated by the dispute resolution center. And then if it goes to trial, that's not too many people, but we manage a lot of those cases. You would lose the ability to have the Auburn, your Auburn citizens be able to handle their small claims here in Auburn. They would have to go to King County District Court. Also, we would lose the, you would lose the name change, ability to do name changes. We have seen a sharp increase in name changes, both. We used to have folks changing their names to more Americanized versions. Now they're changing them back. And they're, which is adorable, and I love seeing that. And there's also a lot of folks who are changing their names to reflect their gender identity. So we see a lot of name changes, and that's a very important part of our work. You would have a community court, but it would be all self-funded. Right now, your community court is funded through the mid-budget. I think the estimate is about $50,000 per year. And I'm not sure if that was, if Candace put that in. I'm sure she did because she's so diligent. But that would be an additional, a lot of money to stand up a community court. So those are the services that you would lose.
And I think on the next slide, the interpreters that you provide as well, how many resources do you have that work in your interpreter services?
What do you mean by resources?
People, bodies, translators?
We have one. Oh, how many, how many interpreters? Hundreds. There are a lot of interpreters. And we use them because some of them can appear by Zoom. They are throughout the state. So there's a lot of interpreters, and they can, we put our jobs up on interpreter webs, and you can just go through and, and pick up a job in interpreter web. You wouldn't have access to interpreter web, so it would be a person calling an interpreter, trying to schedule them for a job if that's what the municipal courts do.
And then with the judge-supervised probation, would there be any shift or impacts in that?
Well, you would have to launch your own probation department, hire your own probation officers. They go through certification. They have their own conferences. They're a professional organization. So that would be an additional expense and effort to launch your own probation department.
And then you mentioned a potential expansion of the community court program, which, you know, every time it comes in front of us, we hear how successful it is. You know, it's a smaller number, but meaningful to those people who are able to go through and graduate and change their lives through that program. In that expansion, what would that look like? Do you have a timeframe or sort of a size or scale?
So the anticipation is that we would start accepting referrals from people who were in custody, which we do not now. So we would have to, because they were in custody, they wouldn't be released. They would stay in custody while accessing the service. So we have to switch some calendars so they could do in custody. The defense attorneys could meet with them. The service providers could meet with them. We could schedule an in-custody calendar for them and provide security for them as well. So there are some moving pieces to making that happen. But that's the expansion to have folks who, you know, are currently incarcerated have access to these programs.
Still me. I just tried to check to make sure there are other questions surfacing. So with that piece for being in custody, because we spoke to the need that sometimes there are individuals who will be remanded to custody as part of getting them into treatment for drug addiction, those in custody participants could very much be in that space of needing, using community court because they are remanded in order to receive drug services or treatment services?
Yeah. Sometimes, I mean, the reality is sometimes people don't get services until they're in custody.
Meaning this would open the door for them?
Absolutely. It would open the door for that. And so we're currently working on that. I think Auburn has decided to hire private security for those, for some of those hearings, rather than employ the sheriff's office, which is less expensive. So we're working on expanding it right now.
Any other questions, council?
Just a comment, which is thank you for sticking through to the end of our meeting today, answering all of our questions, all of my questions, and working very diligently with Director Martenson and Mayor Bacchus to do good things for the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all very much for having us. I really appreciate it. I don't know how to turn this off. I'll break your machine up.
Thank you.
Thank you.